Councilmember Mayo is absent, Moore absent, Anderson absent, Aragorn.
Here.
Capitelli?
Here.
Wengraff?
Here.
Worthington's absent, Wozniak?
Here.
Mayor Bates?
Here. The floor has been present, so we're going to, we're having two public hearings, or excuse me, two matters, not public hearing, two matters before us. We're going to hear from the, we're going to take the public comment after we've had an opportunity to hear the various discussion. So we'll have, we'll put the public comment after we hear from the guidelines on the cellphone use. We'll save some time and allow people a chance to comment at that point, okay? So we're going to start off with the city attorneys going to go set the table, and then we're going to hear 10 minutes from the advocates who want us to see us put guidelines in place, and then we're going to hear from the opposition for the point of view, okay?
Thank you. Good evening. I'm just going to give a brief, well, first of all, there's a supplemental report on your dais that was handed out tonight, which I'll be discussing, so it would be good if you could accept that with a two-thirds vote.
Second.
Okay, move seconded, will all be recorded, aye?
Okay, thank you. As the mayor said, tonight's work session, there will be presentations from CTIA, which is the Wireless Association, the Industry Association, and the advocates of the ordinance that's been under discussion for some time. The supplemental report, and I'll let them speak for themselves, the supplemental report is solely about the litigation and the injunction that was issued recently in October with respect to the San Francisco case. And the report is brief, it, the exhibits are what's important, there's the actual judge's order is the first exhibit. The next three exhibits, which are clearly labeled, are the three disclosures that were required by the San Francisco ordinance. As you can see from the cover pages, two of them were enjoined by the court, and then the last was modified, and it has been modified by the city of San Francisco, City and County of San Francisco. My understanding is that both of the litigants have agreed that this revised order complies with the judge's ruling. My understanding is they both intend to appeal, and I think CTIA can speak to that, at least There's also an item on tonight's agenda about posting information and warnings, if you will, on the city's website with respect to cellphone use. So that'll be coming during the regular meeting. And with that, I had understood, just for clarity, that I was getting 15 minutes tonight.
Ten, we cut it back to ten.
Okay.
Is there a question?
Yeah.
So I, I'm sorry, Zach, so just to make it clear, so this one, this is the last one, they've agreed, both sides have agreed that this is available for, this will be required for posting?
Both sides have agreed that that complies with the judge's order. I don't think either side fully agrees with the judge's order, and I gather it will be going up to the Ninth Circuit.
So there'll be continued litigation even over this one? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Zach, we had a meeting with people, and we decided that we could do it in ten, and then we'll leave some time open for the council and the public, okay?
So with that, unless there's a question, I'd like to turn it over to CTIA.
Mr. Mayor, I thought the agreement was 15 minutes each.
No.
Are you changing?
No, it was ten, you were there. It was ten.
Since I was asked to speak after.
Tell me it got shorter.
Good sentence, stop.
Hi, I'm Dr. Howard Ori. I received my M.D. degree from Tufts Medical School, a master's degree in epidemiology from Harvard. I'm the former deputy director for epidemiology at the Centers for Disease. I've published more than 100 scientific articles, consulted for public health agencies, and I really appreciate the opportunity to appear before you today. I'm here on behalf of the wireless industry to address issues of cellphone safety. The weight of a large body of high-quality scientific evidence strongly suggests there's no association between cellphone use and cancer. Thus, any legislation requiring warning label about purported health dangers of cellphone use would not be fact-based and would mislead consumers. In addition, any warning would be inconsistent with the conclusions of the National Cancer Institute, the FCC, and the FDA. Let me briefly go over the scientific data. If, as some people speculate, wireless phone use causes brain cancer, then we would expect to see an increase in the incidence of brain cancer coincident with the use of wireless phones. None has been observed. Please look at the first page of the handout that I gave you. It has the two black-and-white figures. This comes from a recent National Cancer Institute study, which published these charts. That study states, "During the period of use when mobile phone use was increasing sharply, the overall incidence of brain cancer changed little." The NCI concludes in that study, "Overall, these incidence data from the United States, based on high-quality cancer registries, do not provide support for the view that use of cellphones causes brain cancer." Time-trend data of similar kind of data from other countries also show that, over time, brain cancer rates have changed little. Most recently, Sweden, I've seen Swedish data going through 2009. Now, if you look at the second figure that I provided you, the one with the colored lines, you see that brain cancer incidence in the United States has remained stable at all ages, including adolescents, through 2008, the latest data available. These data are from the CDC and the National Cancer Institute. They're from their cancer reporting systems. They include virtually every cancer that has occurred in the United States. In addition, the issue of brain cancer and cellphone use has been studied for years in animals and people. Recently, an independent international group of scientists reviewed the issue of cellphones and brain cancer and concluded, "Although there remains some uncertainty, the trend in the accumulating evidence is increasingly against the hypothesis that mobile phone use can cause brain tumors in adults." Last month, a prospective Danish study has been published, including information on 3.8 million-person years of follow-up. This study finds no increased risk of brain tumor even after 13 years since beginning cellphone use. While the Danish study, like all epidemiologic studies, has limitations, its findings are consistent with the time-trend data that you've just looked at, showing no association of cellphone use and brain cancer over a long period of time. There is now one published study of cellphone use and brain cancer among children and adolescents. It states, "In summary, we did not observe that regular use of mobile phone increased the risk for brain tumors in children and adolescents." While human epidemiology provides direct information about the effect of wireless phones on humans, animal studies provide useful information because they permit controlled exposure conditions. Scientists have conducted multiple studies using animals, exposing animals to high doses of radio frequency emissions for the life of the animals, including while the animals are in utero. Overwhelmingly, these studies do not report an association between RF exposure and cancer, even under these extreme exposure conditions. Given the data in my presentation, it may seem surprising that a committee of the International Agency for Research on Cancer, IARC, recently announced that cellphones may be, quote, "possibly carcinogenic to humans." This rating change was not new research. The footnote accompanying the press release noted that the 2B rating of, quote, "possibly carcinogenic to humans" is based on limited evidence of carcinogenicity in humans and less-than-sufficient evidence of carcinogenicity in animals, and that chance bias or confounding could not be ruled out with reasonable confidence for the few positive associations reported in the literature. Viewed in this context, "possibly carcinogenic" is telling us there's very little scientific evidence as to the carcinogenicity of cellphone use. In conclusion, there's no consistent risk of brain cancer in the epidemiologic and animal literature. Brain cancer incidence, as you've seen, has remained the same since wireless phone use has become common. There is no known mechanism by which non-ionizing energy from wireless phones can cause cancer. All of these findings apply to pregnant women and children. In short, there is no consistent evidence of adverse health effects from exposure to radio frequency fields. Thus, any warning requirement about possible hazards of cellphone use would be counterfactual and misleading to consumers. To pick up from here, Dr. Fred Schlafter.
I'm a physicist. I'm not associated with CTIA. I'm here as a citizen. However, CTIA very graciously gives, looks like, three and a half minutes to talk, so I'll go, I'll be very brief. I spent my career at Lawrence Berkeley Laboratory studying the interaction of radiation and matter, which is a large part of what we as physicists do. This repeats something that Dr. Ori said, but it's very important. When I faced the question the first time, I'm a member of the Community Action, Community Environmental Action Commission, even though I'm speaking as a citizen, the first question that I asked was, "If cellphones cause cancer, where is the incidence of cancer?" So I got this paper. Everyone knows that cellphone use has increased dramatically. We're at 300 million cellphones, one per citizen in the United States. This line, this flat line is the incidence of brain cancer. There are no cases of brain cancer caused by cellphones, otherwise this line would have gone up. Whatever was causing brain cancer 30 years ago is still causing the same number of cases today. People who look at this often say, "Well, there's a latency period, and we just haven't seen them yet." You can't say a word about a latency period until you have data where the line goes up so you can begin to talk about a lag between when people talked on cellphones and what you see here. So the only conclusion to draw from this is that cellphones are not causing cancer in the United States in 2011. The information is right there. Some of the audience are not going to be happy with that conclusion. This is the electromagnetic spectrum, that's what we're talking about. I'm not going to have time to dwell on this very much, but we've got sunlight in here, we've got radio waves, we've got microwaves, cellphone radiation, X-rays, they're all the same stuff. The only question is how they interact with matter. I'll skip the part about Einstein and the photoelectric effect, simply to say that you cannot break chemical bonds, you can't cause cancer with non-ionizing radiation. Microwaves are non-ionizing. We all know that microwaves can heat matter, and certainly, if you talk on a cellphone, your brain will get warmed up very slightly. However, the power emitted by a cellphone is less than a tenth of what you get if you walk out in the sunshine on a sunny day without a hat. So the heating is not going to have an effect. There's a third topic called non-thermal effects. They have to do with low frequencies, transients, and so on. I find no evidence in the literature, thick reports about non-thermal effects notwithstanding. So I'm going to have to conclude here with a very simple statement, and that is that the reason I don't think we should pass this ordinance or have this ordinance is that we should not alarm the public about something that's not dangerous. And to that end, I'd like to point out that bananas are radioactive, and we don't have point-of-sale caution about them because it's not dangerous. The same applies to cellphones. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We now hear from the people who wish to see us move forward on this. You'll also have 10 minutes.
Hello, I'm Dr. Deborah Davis, and I must apologize because I was, I came here from Washington, D.C., and I was not advised that there was 10 minutes available.
Okay, well, sorry.
So I will move ahead and introduce myself briefly. I was the director of the Board on Environmental Studies and Toxicology at the National Academy of Sciences for 10 years, and I have over 190 scientific publications and 11 monographs. I'm here as the president and founder of Environmental Health Trust. I'm going to talk with you about what we know about radiation from cellphones, and I'd like to say, first of all, that I completely agree with the CTIA, that we do not have consistent evidence on brain cancer. I also agree that cellphone radiation is weak. But what's missing from the realization that cellphone radiation has an effect that has nothing to do with its power, it has to do with the pulse nature of the signal, and you can see here in this illustration from my colleague from the University of Athens, that the impact of radiation will vary greatly depending on the power. With respect to the brain cancer data, I want to say I'm not going to focus on brain cancer today because it has a long latency, but in fact, it's cherry-picking to talk about those countries where there isn't an increase. On our website, we have recently reported the increase in brain cancer in Finland, Norway, and Australia. Those countries happen to have in common that they were early users of cellphones, and authorities in those nations now are concerned that the increase that they're seeing in brain cancer in those nations is a reflection of what's happening because of cellphone use. Now, with respect to microwave radiation, we know that it has positive effects because cellphone-like radiation today is being used to treat liver cancer. If it can treat liver cancer, it's telling you it has a biological effect. It's being used to stop bleeding, to enhance the uptake of drugs, and to detect cancer. So if it has these positive effects, how then can we deny that it might have negative effects? We know it's biologically active. Among the negative effects that have been demonstrated in the peer-reviewed literature that the World Health Organization looked at are these: the ability to damage DNA, to weaken the blood-brain barrier, and to damage sperm. And I want to talk with you now about scientific evidence, again, having nothing to do with cancer, having to do with sperm. These are experimental data developed when taking samples of sperm from human males and exposing them in a test tube to cellphone radiation. The exposed sperm, you see the slide at the top here, the exposed sperm died three times faster than the controlled sperm. This is human sperm. The bottom shows you measures of damage to DNA, and that damage was three times greater in human sperm. So this is not about brains, this is about sperm, although sometimes some people confuse the two of them. Now, what we do know is that cellphone users in a study done at the Cleveland Clinic, the Cleveland Clinic, have found in a controlled observational study that men who reported using cellphones four hours a day and keeping them in their pocket had about half the sperm count of others. And similar results have been reported in Turkey as well as in Australia at the National Center for Biotechnology. Middle school children reported in a report that we're releasing today to the Berkeley City Council in a peer-reviewed study are keeping cellphones in their pocket, some of them for 10 hours a day, 10 hours a day, and the kids are so good at this that they can text while a teacher's looking at them, not looking at the phone. Now, why is this a problem? It might make them great at being neurosurgeons or pilots because of the fast eye-hand coordination, but what it does for their long-term exposure to their gonads is something of great concern, which is why this peer-reviewed article by Mary Redmain, which we released today to the city council, argues that it's important to take precautionary policies with our children. Our children and their parents have a right to know about this damaging effect on human sperm. Now, with respect to brain cancer, I would like to just say, while that is not the major concern of this issue at this time, although the CTIA just spent most of its time discussing it, the fact is there's no increase in brain tumors found in the survivors of the atom bombs that dropped at the end of the war until 40 years later, 40 years later. Forty years ago, almost no one had a cellphone except for a few people in the military, even 10 years ago, but the use of cellphones has grown greatly, and that's why the World Health Organization issued its report. They concluded that where studies have followed people for 10 years or more, there is a doubled risk of brain tumors on well-conducted studies. The Israeli government has issued a warning about parotid gland tumors, a malignant tumor of the cheek. One in five of them is occurring in someone under the age of 20, and that's why they've issued a warning. These are data taken from the Journal of American Medical Association on brain metabolism, showing a significant increase in glucose metabolism, seen on the side that's marked R there, after just 50 minutes, that's five zero minutes. I want you to realize that cellphone standards today were set in 1993 to avoid heating. It's not about heat. The data today are out of touch with the current issues that we know in the science. And I'm going to now turn remarks over to my colleague, Professor Stan Glantz, who I'm honored to be with today. Many of you may know Professor Glantz, who is a distinguished researcher in the area of tobacco and is here with me today.
So, thank you. I'm Stan Glantz. I'm a professor of medicine at UCSF. As Deborah said, my forte is tobacco, but I've kind of been pulled into the cellphone discussion through, because I think it's interesting. The first thing, I know the people at IARC, I have worked, and I have over 300 or 350 publications and several books, since everyone's counting that. I know the people at IARC, I've worked with the people at IARC, I know Jan Sammett, who chaired the committee that listed cellphone radiation as a possible human carcinogen. IARC is impossible to convince of anything. It wasn't until about 1972 that they agreed smoking caused lung cancer. And if IARC is giving it a category 2B, that says there's something to be concerned about. Now, they didn't say it caused brain cancer, they said it was a possible cause. But I think the question people need to ask themselves is, do you want to be doing the natural experiment for 40 years, exposing people to uncontrolled cellphone radiation if it's possibly giving them brain cancer? The, I want to, so I think that the earlier speaker really minimized how hard it is to even get a category 2B out of IARC. The second thing is, I find the sperm data very, to the point that I'm actually using several of the studies that Deborah talked about and several others as examples in a statistics textbook that's about to be published. And I think, as the earlier speaker said, what you have to do is look at the epidemiology, look at the experimental data, look at the animal data, and when you look at the sperm results, they're quite compelling. What I tell my students is a cellphone isn't good enough to be a contraceptive. But if you, and I told this to my son, if you want to have kids, don't keep it on in your pocket and minimize the use. I have to say, I've been shocked at the behavior of the cellphone industry, and in many ways, they're behaving like the tobacco companies. They're attacking the science, they're not taking reason, don't, it counts on the time, they're not taking reasonable steps that could be taken to reduce risks, like directional antennas, like putting shielding on the phones if you have it on your belt so it doesn't broadcast into your body. And they're fighting, like, the lawsuit they brought against San Francisco is almost identical to the lawsuit that the tobacco industry brought against the Food and Drug Administration, against putting labels on cigarette packages, warning people of the dangers. So I think that prudent, I'm not saying cellphones should be banned, I have one, which I have a wear piece on to keep it away from my head, and I leave it turned off when I don't need it. And I think that there are lots of things you can do with a cellphone to use it so that you get the benefits without the risks. And I think, you know, if you go back in the tobacco issue, Berkeley was the first city in California to pass a local smoking law in the late '70s, and look, some of you may have been involved in that, I think. And, you know, look where we've come. And I think that the local action by San Francisco, Berkeley, if you choose to do it, and other places to start elevating this issue and getting people to take it seriously is a really, really, really important thing to do. I think there's enough science out there to be worried. Do we know everything? No. I look at the literature on cellphones, and I think it's about where tobacco was in the '50s. You know, there was enough to know that there might be a problem, there were some areas where, I'll be very surprised if the sperm research is reversed. Nobody's looked at the effect on eggs because it's so hard, but I'm sure there are similar things there. And I think it's something that we need to deal with, and I'm very disappointed in the cellphone industry for not behaving responsibly, and instead of fighting these things, working to get solutions. Thank you.
15 seconds, I want to point out to you here, this graph that has been developed, and you will see on the bottom, there is no change in incidence for brain cancer in the United States, but on the top, you will see something called the Central Brain Tumor Registry of the United States, which shows an increase in brain cancer. And part of this is a coding issue. If we have time, if you're interested, I can explain more about it.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. I'm sorry about your coming out of the ambition, impressions, you have more time, I'm sorry about that. Okay, so I think we'll actually hear now, how many people in the public wish to address this issue? Have we got a show of hands? Is that right? Now, some people are lying to me, they're going to come forward. Okay, so there are almost about 10, so I'm just going to, I'm going to give you each two minutes, if that's okay? So please come forward, and you can yield your time if you want to give more time, you can give your time to another person, they can have four minutes, okay? Please line up, there's no particular order. You're first, go ahead. You speak right there from the podium.
Hello, I'm a local filmmaker from San Francisco. I've been following this issue since January, and I've interviewed a lot of different people, including Steve Wozniak, the co-founder of Apple. Steve Wozniak told me prior to Steve Jobs dying, by about a couple months, that in many cases that he's seen, that there are chances that cellphones can cause cancer in the data, it is there. This is a guy who started America's biggest cellphone company, it's the biggest company in America, bigger than ExxonMobil. These people have money to be able to lobby, and they are doing it as hard as they can. And if you guys were to pass legislation in Berkeley, I think it would be incredibly powerful, and I would be incredibly grateful for this. I've interviewed a lot of doctors, many of whom are in this room, but many as well on the East Coast, like Dr. Katz from Yale University, who said that with tobacco, you didn't see an increase in cancer for 30 years after the fact that people were smoking quite a bit. So this whole thing of latency, I think, is very, very poorly represented by the doctors on the cellphone industry side, and I think that you guys should definitely think more about this issue and consider passing legislation. And I'm going to give up the rest of my time for the rest of these people to speak.
Thank you. Okay, next, please.
Hi, I'm Kate Bernier. I do not have a cellphone. I do not want to put others at risk who I feel they would be at risk, notably animals, children, not in that order, even trees, and even our magnetosphere, which protects us from the sun. Thank you.
My name is Joel Moskowitz. I'm the director of the Center for Public Health and the School of Public Health at UC Berkeley. I sent you an email on Sunday night, and I see it's in the supplemental package. I also have, I printed out one of the links, I submitted materials to the Community Environmental Advisory Commission. This is the Q&amp;A I did for the Huffington Post, David Katz, in the spring. Three years ago, I was a total skeptic about this issue. I didn't believe cellphone radiation could possibly cause tumor risk or do sperm damage. I hadn't reviewed the research at that time. We had a visiting scholar from the National Cancer Center in South Korea. He did, in conjunction with our research group and some other researchers, a review of the literature we did, which was published in the Journal of Clinical Oncology in the fall of 2009, about two years ago. I won't go into the gory details. Yeah, if you look at the overall body of the literature, you basically see no association, but if you partition the studies based on the quality of the research or the funding source, which are highly confounded, you see distinctly different patterns. There is clear evidence of increased tumor risk, brain tumor risk, parotid gland tumor risk, particularly for people who have used cellphones for 10 or more years, especially on the side of the head in which they use the cellphone. Regarding sperm damage, an issue that's come to my attention since that paper, and I've done dozens of interviews with the media from around the world, interestingly, much of the coverage that Got no, no media coverage anywhere in the, in the world. So I put out a, a news release to about 50 reporters that had interviewed me. Finally got two to pick it up, but one of those stories went global and received over 100 news websites, in, mostly in Asia.
Your time is up. Sorry.
But they'll be available for questions.
Yeah, if you have any questions, feel free to contact me at any time.
Hi, my name is Ellen Marks. This is my husband, Alan Marks. I have been involved in this for about three years. Alan had a grand mal seizure in 2008, a week before Senator Kennedy, who our son, who was here tonight, worked for. And we then found out that the Kennedy family was concerned that his cellphone use was the cause of his glioma, more probable than not. Experts around the world have said that my husband's glioma, which is the same tumor that the World Health Organization and International Agency for Research on Cancer classified as a possible human car, they classified cellphone use as a possible human carcinogen based on an increased risk of glioma associated with wireless cellphone use. I agree with Dr. Stanton Glantz, our conservative agency. I want to know, I've traveled around the nation, testifying against the cellphone industry. I want to know why, if everything they are telling us, this is the Apple iPhone literature. In the back of the book, you can forget about all the science. The science is there, though, I firmly believe it. But stop debating the science, and why is the FCC requiring that this language be in every manual? It tells you the iPhone is to be kept five eighths of an inch from your body. The BlackBerry, and they talked about sperm tonight, the BlackBerry says to keep it .98 inches from the abdomen, from your body, especially the lower abdomen of a teenager and the abdomen of a pregnant woman. Why, Mr. Ashalt and Dr. Ori, is that information in these books? That is the bottom line. And then, when the cities and states, great cities like you, want to put it at the point of sale, they come in and sue and say that it's a violation of their First Amendment rights. There's something very wrong with what's going on here. And I thank you, the City of Berkeley, for putting on this forum and allowing us to speak about it. On behalf of my family, this has been torture. And many other victims have reached out to me. I've testified to Congress on this. I've been on national TV. There are thousands of people dying from this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, I, I just want to say that had I read the manual, I wouldn't have done what I did with my cellphone, been more, done preventative, I would have used it in a more sensible way. I didn't read the manual. I knew how to use the phone. And so I didn't read the manual, and it's buried in there. And I think that it should be more, people should be more aware of what's in that manual. If they're, if they're putting it in there, then, then there is an issue. And I'd like to give the rest of my time to my wife again. So I know you can speak for hours.
Thank you. Well, I could, but I won't, I won't. I think that the point is that, like Senator Semidion said in the California State Environmental Quality Commission hearing, when Senator Mark Leno tried to get very minimal language passed in May, and he pulled it until next year. Senator Semidion said to Daine Snowden, the then CTIA VP, "There is an issue." He said, "If this information is showing up in the back of these books, there is an issue, and you cannot deny it." He said, "Why is that information there, Mr. Snowden?" And he very sheepishly answered, "Because the FCC requires us to put it there." And there was great laughter in the crowd, because the industry is telling everyone that the FCC says they're safe. What they're not telling you is the FCC says they're safe if you hold them up to an inch away from your body, the way they are tested. And thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Tony Hill. I'm retired, and I live in Berkeley. I've listened to these arguments, if you could call them that. I tend to try to listen to the scientific data. And I haven't seen, I haven't heard any. I've seen graphs on the screen by both sides. I've heard that there are studies worldwide on both sides. And they have doctors on both sides who claim one way and then the other. So what are we listening to tonight? Can you make a decision by hearing anecdotal stories of tragedy? I don't think so. There's too many anecdotal stories of no tragedy. So why don't we have a debate in which people can criticize the others' studies and show where the flaws are? Are there flaws in both studies, either side? Let's, let's find, let's find out. Let's get both sides to get up here and criticize each other's studies and show where the flaws are. And not just listen to, "I had a cousin who died of whatever." I carry a cellphone, yeah. And I, and so far, I haven't been convinced to not carry it. But, okay. So I think that we need a meeting, or several meetings, in the public to show how the other side has, has massaged the data to make it look like their side is right. I admit that the, obviously, the cellphone people have their reasons for doing it. The other people have their reasons for doing it. Let's get them out in a forum and have a debate and settle which data is which data. I mean, there's countries all over the world saying that their data is correct.
May I ask a question?
Yep.
Sure. Sir, you said you hadn't been convinced to stop using your cellphone, carrying it with you.
Right.
Is it possible for you to be convinced to use it more safely?
Many things are possible. I could throw it away. That's a possibility, too.
No, that's a direct question. Could you be convinced?
Sure.
Through data, through the process, through outline?
Sure. If you showed me the data, and you showed me a lineup, enough people who are familiar with this, that I, that I should not use it the way I'm using it, I'd be happy to use it the way they suggested.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, next, please. I think we're trying to hold most questions till we get to the end. If we can, I'll let that one go, but we, okay?
Hello, and thank you for having us here today. I want to read you a quote. Let me be very clear. The industry has not said once that cellphones are safe. And let me tell you who said that. The CTIA, the industry themselves, said the cellphones are not proven safe. The burden should be on the CTIA to prove that they are safe, not the burden on us to prove that they're dangerous. Gavin Newsom said, "The CTIA, they buy the science, they buy apathy, and they buy politicians." The info is already listed in the back of the user manuals, hidden. It needs to be put onto the box on posters, visible at the point of sale. I want to read a couple facts to you real quick. Cellphone radiation has been shown to damage and break living DNA. Research has shown that talking on a cellphone for as little as only two minutes will disable the blood brain barrier. Talking on a cellphone for only 500 minutes a month can increase the probability of brain cancer by 140 to 300 percent. Cellphones worn on a belt clip can reduce sperm, sperm by already 30 percent. We discussed that earlier. Over 31 million new young users will join the market between 2005 and 2010. An environmental advocacy group for young people in Spain argues, "The mobile telephone industry is acting like the tobacco industry by designing products that addict the very young." A two-minute cellphone call can alter a child's brain function for over an hour. In 1993, the telecom industry committed $25 million for a series of research projects designed to prove that cellphones are safe. I realize that we keep going back and forth in the science here, but you need to employ the precautionary principle. Play it safe. It's better to be safe than sorry.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jeff Nordahl. I actually drove up here from Santa Cruz. But, yeah, as far as, I very much endorse the concept of educating people. At a bare minimum, what's already printed in the manual by the manufacturer, that would be nice to have that displayed at the time of sale. And what, what disturbs me is, I have a three-year-old daughter. And so I go to a lot of baby group functions and such. And I have seen infants where mothers give their baby their cellphone to play with. As a chew toy, there's actually iPhone applications that have little songs and lullabies with graphics of little cartoon characters dancing around, where they put the iPhone right next to their baby's head to help lull their baby to sleep. Now that I've read a lot of this research, that's very disturbing to me. And if I bring this up with some of my friends', parents', you can understand it's an awkward situation. I don't want to be the, be the one who's bringing up that news for people. And to tell you the truth, nine out of 10 of my friends are completely unaware that there's any risk associated with a cellphone whatsoever. So, that's, that's what I'd like to say and let you guys know, that there's a lot of babies out there using cellphones as chew toys. Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Lloyd Morgan, long-term Berkeley resident. You heard at the beginning of Dr. Ori's discussion of why it was impossible, because cellphones, so many people are using them, there's no increase in brain tumors. Well, there's another way to look at it. If cellphones are causing brain tumors, what would you expect? Well, first of all, cellphones only radiate a portion of your body. So whatever side you have it on, will be, will you have the risk. This has been shown for brain cancer. This has been shown for acoustic neuroma. This has been shown for meningioma. This has been shown for the parotid gland in our cheek. This has been shown for our testes, where if you keep it in the left pocket, it's your left testicle. If you choose to have your right testicle get the cancer, you put it in your right pocket. In addition, the studies have shown that the greater your cumulative hours of use, the higher your risk. The greater than the length of time since your first use, the higher the risk. The greater the power radiated by the cellphone, the higher the risk. And the younger you are when you first start using a cellphone, the higher the risk. Now, if causing cancer, that's what you would expect, and that's the data. Latency time is the great smog that the industry puts out. They know full well, there's a 30 to 40-year latency time. So when they show you an incidence graph that doesn't increase, what percent of the popul, that's the whole population, that's 100 percent of the population, what percent of the population was using cellphones 30 or 40 years ago? The answer in the United States is zero. Yet, we find greater than 10 years of use, a doubling of risk consistently, including industry-funded studies. Double the risk. Well, what we're looking at, if you think about a classic bell curve, that the peak is at 30 years, way on the left side is the 10 years, and that's where the risk really is already occurring. It's going to get much worse. The final thing is, the negative studies are industry-funded. So, as I was just saying, the, the industry literally consistently publishes studies. They got more money than anybody. The United States does almost zero research. And it's the classic thing. We've all heard of financial bias. And guess where the money comes from? But the fascinating thing is, even the industry-funded studies are finding doubled risk at greater years. This is a major problem, and we're going to have a tsunami of brain tumors in about 10 to 15 years, and all the other cancers. The parotid gland study in China has shown a 20- and 30-fold risk. That's tobacco risk. Thank you.
Hi, thank you for holding this hearing tonight. My name is Sarah Sunstein. I work in Berkeley. And I'm not going to talk about science. I'm going to talk about my experience, which is, if I am near a cellphone that's operating, within a minute or so, my head starts getting like this. If I'm driving a car and my friend is next to me, using the cellphone on her left ear, my head starts going like this. I can get really out of it, being around cellphones, as well as Wi-Fi and smart meters, but that's another story. I'm not the only one with this experience. I know a lot of people who are also very sensitive to them. And my thinking is that just because other people aren't aware of the effects on their body, doesn't mean there aren't being effects. I consider myself one of those canaries in the coal mine. And if it's doing it to me, it's doing it to other people, perhaps at a degree, or some other something. But cellphones have a radiation, they do something. I would love to see this ordinance passed. I'd also like to see added to it, the power of, of each cellphone labeled very clearly. I have a very old cordless phone that works great. I can use it. I had to get a new cordless phone, because it's impossible to find answering machines when they die without getting a whole phone thing. This newer cordless phone is like 6 Hz or megahertz or whatever, but it's 6 instead of .9. I cannot hold it up to my head. So, that's it. And I know I'm not the only person in Berkeley like this. I think people need to be warned. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The last gentleman who joined, or person joined the line, is anybody after that person's going to speak for one minute? Because we, totally deceptive, you guys, yes, please. Two minutes, a rest, and then after the, the next people joining the line are going to get a minute after the person that rounds.
Hello, my name is Leslie Dottayen-Jay. I'm a San Francisco resident, and I have a 12-year-old son. And I want the right to know. The reason is that I refuse to give my son a cellphone. However, in his class of about 59 kids, every single child has a cellphone. The parents need to know information about cellphones. The science is maybe not final, but there's enough evidence that the link between tumors, brain tumors, and cellphone is there. Parents especially need to know this. They need to know this information. If you are concerned about potential health effects from cellphone RF energy, the City of San Francisco recommends, this was part of the right to know, which the CTIA is battling us against. We, as a parent, I can tell you, majority of parents do not know this information. They're too busy working, they're too busy with taking care of the kids to research this information. Please, if you would take note of that. It's very important information. Would you like me to leave this with you?
We have a copy. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jenny Shore. I'm a resident of Richmond. I'm not working now, but I had a 20-year career in marketing, including technology marketing. I concur with so much of what was said, and I won't repeat it. I do think that parents need a right, have a right to know. Everybody has a right to know. I read Debra's book from cover to cover, and I try to express to my friends, and I'm, people respond to me like I'm taking away their sexy toy. And I think that we need to move beyond and start designing products that are safer. And we need to be afraid to hold our phone next to our skin. And we aren't afraid, we don't know to be afraid. We can't feel it. And I think that even the phone should say, "Don't touch, don't let the phone touch your skin." And it's hard to be, be aware and try to share that with other people, to keep my friends' babies safe. And it would be helpful if the city passed a law, so that, so that when, when those of us that understand try to express it, people can maybe listen. And I really think that the industry needs to move into developing products that, that take advantage of what we know, so they're safe. And it's a huge, huge industry with a lot of profit at stake, and that's really where the, this issue is, I think. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Toni Stein. I live in Berkeley. I'm speaking as a citizen. I work a day job for the state. I'm an environmental engineer with a PhD, and I also do community service. I'm here to speak, I have a nine-year-old and a 12-year-old. I'm a mother. And I'm very concerned about my children, as well as all children, all adults, people with disabilities, and workers as well. And I think we, as citizens and people on, on the And I think we, as, um, citizens and people on, on the city council, have an obligation to, um, express and provide information. This is about explaining safety and trying to use devices that we all use and acknowledge, and to use them safely, and to learn how to do that. And in order to do that, we have an obligation to provide information to each other, and to be community neighbors, to help each other learn, um, the information that isn't so well-understood. And it's simple to understand the safety features, and that's what this is all about. We can fight about the science, and that is important, but right now, we just need to help each other as community, um, people, to help each other to learn how to use them as safely as we know how, and to spread the word. And that's what I hope, um, is important. The obligation to those that work for the city of Berkeley, we have to, uh, also, um, keep their safety and to teach them, if that's part of their job, how to use them safely. Because, uh, we, in the end, pay for the, um, what ends up as workers' compensation claims, if they are to get sick. This ends up on the shoulders of our city as well. I want to help my children to use them safely.
Thank you. Okay, this is our last two-minute person, and then you guys, if you can get somebody to, you can have another minute, too.
I don't think I'm going to take two minutes, but, hi, my name is Claudia Castro, I'm a long-term Berkeley resident, and this is my first city council meeting. It was felt important enough for me to come. Um, I have friends who, we have talks about our cellphones, and I have friends who've given up their cellphones because, and I experienced it too, you can feel like, um, I feel like an aching in my hand. And I'm, and this is like the only kind of thing I've ever, other things don't bother me, but I do experience that. And I just wanted to say, um, here's an experiment that you can try. Um, go buy one of those $20 Go phones. There are ones that low-income people use, and right now I'm using one, and I hate talking on it, um, because it seems that the lower the price tag, or for a $20 cellphone, you get a lot more radiation. So, um, try it. Um, and, um, a lot of us are trying to, um, just like survive these days, and I need to buy a new cellphone, and, um, and I don't have the time to do all the research, and, and so you could help your citizens a lot by giving us recommendations, and, um, because not all of us have time to do that kind of research. Thanks.
Michael.
Hi, my name is Michael Barglow. Um, I, while the meeting was going on, I turned my cellphone off, because I got a little piece of information that made complete sense to me. You know, I'm sitting in this meeting for an hour, turn my cellphone off. Um, and it's that kind of information, I think, that makes sense. Um, I'm speaking, uh, to those of you who may be leaning in the direction of voting against this resolution, so I'd like you to listen. I would like to hear your reasons for wanting to keep from the public the amount of radiation these phones produce. Why keep this information under wraps? Why are you against those people who are leaning against this resolution? Why are you against providing people with this information so they could decide whether the amount of radiation is an issue for them? And then go out and buy a cellphone that has less radiation? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, my name is Tom Connelly, came over from Nevada, California. Um, I work for a little startup company over in Nevada. Uh, my employer was inspired to, uh, one of the projects we're working on right now is a little Android app, because look what my phone does.
Too close.
If, if the phone, and we're, it's a little app that helps people, reminds people to keep the phone, uh, a safe distance from their head.
I don't think people could hear that. What did it say?
Do it again?
Too clop, too clop, too, too close.
It says too close.
To your body.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, right now I've got it set to, uh, only to any time, but there's a, there's a preference in there to set it so it goes off during phone calls only. Anyway, I'm not here to sell, you know, our $1.99 app, but, uh, our, our founder of our company was inspired by four of his personal friends passed away due to glioma. And we, we went to the CITA.
We're going to give you another 15 seconds.
Thank you very much. We went to the CTIA cellphone trade show a couple of weeks ago, and we kind of expected to go into a hostile environment, where in fact, we were greeted very warmly by a lot of the engineers that designed the phones, and they all kind of said, gee, it's about time somebody addressed this issue.
Thank you.
We had a 19-by-25 graphic that had all of the distance.
Great, good luck, good luck. Thank you.
Good luck to all of us.
Hi, thank you for listening. My name's Rosemary Binsco, I live in Berkeley.
Can you move closer to the mic, please?
Yeah. And I've never had a cellphone, because I've always been convinced by the research that I've seen, uh, including that new research that if you're in a enclosed metal surroundings, like a muni, streetcar, then the effects are stronger and farther out. And I feel put upon by people who are using their cellphones next to me, because I know it's affecting me. And so that's one reason I feel like it should be on theirs. For the people who don't choose to use the cellphones, it's not our choice, we're still affected even though we're not using it. Thanks.
Thank you.
I am Stephanie Thomas from Berkeley. I was actually going to address something similar to that, that anytime you're in a metal enclosure, like an elevator, um, a car, a train, um, that's the time the cellphone has to work harder to try to get the signal. And in a car or a train, um, you're moving between cell tower to cell tower, and at the, the, so, so this is the kind of information, if people could get this kind of information, perhaps if you have to use it in the car for a moment, turn it off. Um, also, since it bounces, there are devices, uh, that you can, I think, put on your phone to put on the top of your car, so the signal, you know, comes from there to your earphone and everything. So there are lots of, lots of things, and, um, well, the other thing I was going to say, and I, and I didn't bring the facts with me, but there was something in our smart meter group, and I don't read all the things anymore, uh, out of time, but something about a study somewhere, we, that young people, I'll just, just say, young people, um, there are studies about their learning going down using the cellphones.
Thank you, thank you.
And I could send that to you later.
Thank you, that'd be great. Thank you. This is our last speaker.
Hi, my name is Lori Bamgorton. Um, the Occupy movement all over this country is making clear right now that the corporations, um, have been controlling our lives, ripping us off, and controlling our governments, our national governments, local governments, whatever, okay? And personally, this freaks me out. I have a son, he's 26, he says to me the other day, "Mom, I want to have three kids." He's been using a cellphone and has it in his pocket. So when the first, when the industry people and doctors get up, I feel, ah, phew, thank God, my blood pressure goes down. And then I hear what I believe to be the precautionary truth, which is that we don't know, it's dangerous, sperm is dying, and what worries me is what happens if the sperm isn't dead, but comes out damaged? I have friends who live with kids with severe disabilities, and it controls their lives. They don't have a life for themselves trying to deal with their sick children. So, I mean, how could we do anything else but be precautionary if we don't want to be controlled by corporate, corporate America?
Okay. So, so that concludes the public input. So, there'll be questions now for the council, and then I want to remind people, we have another, another, you know, work session. Uh, I'd like to start off by asking our attorney, in your presentation, I'm sorry, I didn't quite get this, uh, I'm concerned about our ability to act at this point, assuming we wanted to, to take steps. Is it, is it possible that we could conceivably adopt something similar to what you presented to us? Or are we in limbo with a court, waiting to see what the court parameters the court's going to, uh, exercise?
Well, we have, this, the city has not been enjoined, so, so Berkeley can do it at once. I think, um, it would not be wise under the circumstances probably to go beyond what, uh, Judge Alsup, you know, allowed in his injunction, but that's ultimately a policy choice for you.
Okay. And I want to just notify people in the audience, this is actually just an informational hearing, really, and we cannot, we're not noticed to take any action. We can't, uh, we can't take action even if we wanted to. We'd have to adjournize that and advertise that before we could take any action. So this is really just for information this evening. Counselor Wozniak?
Yeah, I want to make some remarks on the issue. I, originally I supported, um, putting some information out on the general principle of right to know, but I, I was concerned, I think, by the advocacy group that, um, they don't want to just do right to know, they want to have a right to frighten people in many ways. They overstate the facts. And I think we do need to keep this on the tack, facts. And the facts really are that if cellphone radiation, or RF radi, you know, right in this region, which is, also includes TV and radio, which have been around for 100 years, almost, uh, cause cancer, uh, it's going to be a very weak effect. Because even ionizing radiation, you know, the people in Hiroshima and Nagasaki who survived the bomb blast and got cancer later on, it was only 10% above the background cancer rate. It was a weak effect, and those people got a very high dose. So, we're talking about electromagnetic radiation down in the radio frequency range or the cellphone range, that's millions to billions of times lower energy. And it's the energy of the photons that makes a difference, whether you can actually break a chemical bond or not, whether you can actually break DNA. Any cellphone study using, you know, cellphone radiation that shows breaks strands of DNA should be very, very skeptical, because it, you know, the energies of those photons are millions of times too low in energy for that to happen. It's much more likely that it's, it's experimental. I'm, I'm saying, you know, would you check, I want you to be very careful about that kind of data. There's also been raised analogy between smoking and cellphones. And I, I want to say, it's, it's very different. Smoking involves a lot of chemicals, and chemical, our bodies are, is a very exquisitely complicated chemical machine. Some very little differences, like oxygen interacting with hemoglobin, it's essential for us breathing, you change that molecule, adding a carbon and have CO, you know, carbon monoxide, and you can kill people. Chemicals, very low amounts can be very toxic, okay? Radiation, electromagnetic radiation, the toxicity depends on the energy, and you have to have high enough energy to break chemical bonds to cause cancer. At least, that's all of the physics that we know, okay? I would like to, I would also like to comment, people have said the latency period for cancer is 30 or 40 years. That's just not true. You go look at the Hiroshima studies, the, they saw leukemia within the first 10 years, the same way in Chernobyl. Thyroid cancers were, they saw them after five to 10 years. The latency is not 30 or 40 years, okay? It's much, much shorter than that.
Please, please.
These are, these are facts, we're not arguing interpretation here. There's, there's a lot of room for interpretation in any study, because you're looking for a very weak effect. So let me, let me, let me make a few more comments, and then we can go to other council people.
Please, the audience, I just wanted the audience, come on. This is, we're having an information, he's entitled to his opinion, please hold your comments.
People have said that somehow, the fact that you're not supposed to hold a cellphone right on your head, and if you move it a half an inch away, or they said five eighths of an inch, which is a little over a half an inch, somehow it reduces the danger. Well, what's, if there's, if it's dangerous that, you know, on the surface, it's still going to be dangerous at five eighths of an inch, there's no decrease. The, the, the inverse scallop is, is, has zero effect at that point, okay? It doesn't reduce the intensity by changing at a half an inch. You, you go sit down and do the calculation, I have you to walk you through it. The, the last comment that, uh, I want to make is that, you know, there's, there are literally thousands of studies about cellphones, okay? And many of them show no effect, some of them show, uh, small effects, and, uh, it's, 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 the picture isn't clear. And some people say we should invoke the precautionary principle, and there's a reasonable argument for that. But, that's different than saying that, you know, we're facing Armageddon in 10 years. And, uh, you know, it's, it's a possible carcinogen. Other things that are listed as possible carcinogens are coffee and pickled vegetables. I mean, are we going to stop drinking coffee because it's a possible carcinogen? Do we put, you know, on all our, you know, coffee things that there's a warning there? Or, you know, maybe, uh, depends how far you want to go with the precautionary principle. So I, I think you want to have to have some balance here. I mean, there may be some risks. The science is not settled to say it is, I, I think is, you know, there's some pieces of the science that settle, but there are lots and lots of studies out there, some done with higher and, and better quality or better, you know, constructed studies. And, um, you have to look at them all, you can't cherry pick and just take the ones that agrees with your point of view. That's not good science.
Thank you. Counselor Member Anderson?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that, uh, this brief period of time that we, um, allowed for this discussion, uh, is totally inadequate. Uh, I think when we're dealing with a, uh, subject of this kind of import, uh, it's incumbent upon the city, uh, as the protectors of the health and safety of people in this community, um, to, uh, take a more vigorous and more expansive look at this thing. I would recommend that the city co-sponsor, with anybody else that wants to be part of it, a whole-day symposium on this, where we can have the debate and the discussion about the science. Which, according to some people, is urban, open to various interpretations. What's not open to interpretation is our responsibility to provide information to people so that they can make informed decisions about consumer products that may be dangerous to them. When these issues first arose around the cellphone towers, about four or five years ago, I went on the internet and researched the amount of money that the cellphone industry concentrated on Congress in the years after 1996 and the passage of the Telecommunications Act. $500 million went to Congress in the form, uh, of lobbyist fees and other kinds of things that we commonly recognize now as being a form of bribery. The person that stepped to the microphone and noted the fact that we have upheaval all over this country, because people are fed up with their lives, every, of their lives, being controlled by those who have the most money and the most resources. And what we do have are people and people power. And we need to exercise that like the people are exercising across this country and across this globe, resisting the oppressive boot of finance and money and influence on the legislative process that spills over invariably into the scientific community. I can cite you a number of reports around the issues of asbestos, smoking, and other forms of radiation, that powerful industry with un, almost unlimited resources was able to field scientists, even doctors, coming on television with smoking commercials, saying that was just fine. So, we know what the influence and the power of money and vested interests can do to the welfare of the body politic of this country. We have a responsibility to employ those principles that were developed from our life experiences, having to do with how people have been bamboozled by bad products with lots of money behind them, and Congress people and others being bought off to look the other way. We're not looking the other way. Red herrings that get trotted out, uh, bananas, vegetables, you know, come on. Are you talking to children here? You're not. I know you wish you were talking to children, because they're more easily influenced to buy your products at an early age. But we have a responsibility here to be clear about what it means for this body, this city council, to take a stand in favor and in support of people being allowed to make informed decisions. And that's all this ordinance ever wanted to do, was make informed decisions. Put the, put the information out there, let people make their own decisions, let people be educated about the things that already appear in the manuals, in the smallest of print, where you're not encouraged to read it. We want to blow that print up, post it, and let people have a fair fighting chance in making decisions about the products they use. When these cell- When these cellphones were first introduced, there was no mention of huge bandwidth to transfer data. It was merely a means of communications similar to the phone that you already had in your home, and that's how this stuff was sold to us. And as time went along, and the money got big, and the greed got even bigger, then we have 100 million cellphones in the country that haven't been adequately vetted to see if they are dangerous to people. We have a responsible, responsibility in government to advocate for those who can't advocate for themselves. The three-year-old is playing with a phone. The 10-year-old that takes his phone to school and then puts it under their pillow at work, at, at home, under their pillow. These are incredibly invasive things to our bodies that we have no real knowledge of, and we have just scratched the surface when it comes to informing the public. And we need to take this thing to its maximum, inform the public so that the public can know, and then other questions will come up, you know that. This is no different from the National Rifle Association opposing everything that limits the, the sale and use of guns, whether they're assault rifles or .30 clip magazines and pistols. They always come out, take a stand, and fight back on any effort to try to reduce the danger to the public because money is involved.
Can we, can you conclude? Okay. So, I think we've had, so, we have had two sides of the coin here, so, now, but I want to question people. At 6:30, we're going to terminate this, and we're going to go to the other. So, I'd ask, and I see there are three other members wish to speak. We're going to have more opportunity, this subject is not going away. I'm sure we're going to have it scheduled back for some other actions as soon as we see what happens in San Francisco. So, I would ask that you keep your remarks brief, and we end at 6:30, okay? Councilmember Capitelli?
Yeah. It's always hard to follow Councilmember Anderson. But I, I think, first of all, I think all of us should be respectful of one another as we discuss this issue. I am not the sharpest tack in the box, and so, understanding the, the information that was presented tonight, I'm, I'm getting sort of an overview, and obviously, people disagree as to statistics. I do agree with Councilmember Anderson, I think people should be able to make informed decisions. And if there is a risk involved, then I think people should know the risk, no matter how small it might be. I went home today, and I am, I own a cellphone, and I got my box out and went through the manuals, and nowhere could I find actually any warning at all. And then I noticed on the bottom of the box, in very small font, that it meets the FCC exposure guidelines, and for further information, go to fcc.gov/oaet/ea. So, I went there, and I spent 25 minutes trying to find any kind of warning or cautionary wording, and couldn't find it. And I'm pretty good at going around the, the web. So, I would say it's, it's difficult to make an informed decision. At my age, given the level of my sperm activity, that's probably not an issue for me, but I hope my wife's not watching tonight. But I do think, I go back to the idea of an informed decision. And I, I have a question for the city attorney, but I will say, by the way, I was listening on the radio the other day, and there was a report as to the more well-done your steak is, the more carcinogens there are in the steak. And I don't eat steak much, but that must be disappointing to a lot of people. I want to ask the city attorney, at this point, this is the one item that the judge, that the court has ruled San Francisco can go ahead with?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. This, this particular court, and I assume it's going up to the appellate level, and it could even go to the Supreme Court.
That's my assumption, and, and the attorney from CTIA is here, and he could answer that question as well.
You think he wants to publicly state that he's going to make an appeal of the, of the decision?
Is that the end?
He may not. In any case, I would certainly be willing to move forward with this type of disclosure. I, it seems a little foolish for us to go forward with additional, you know, the stickers, et cetera, because we're just going to wind up in court, and we'll be enjoined. I assume that would be the likely result?
Well, it's certainly a possibility.
Okay. I guess, I guess what I'm seeing is this, this is going to be fought in the courts. I want to participate with an amicus brief, or a friend of the court, or whatever that might be, in terms of moving San Francisco's case forward, but I would, I would suggest that we come back with an action which we know we will be able to move forward with, and allow our citizens to have some additional information as to the dangers involved.
Counselor Orwosian?
Yeah, thank you. You know, I'm, I can't really manage the sort of dueling of the scientific studies, but I, I don't think there's any reason for us to really wait for making the first step, which is to go ahead with what's already, which is pretty much what you would, you would suggested, because I think it is a first step. We watched the, the whole tobacco debacle over decades, and we knew that more and more came out all the time. And there were fewer and fewer experts who were willing to sit up there and, and lie, frankly. So, rather than, you know, take our time for this, I just wanted to let people know that I, I do support going ahead with this first step, which is to give, give information to people. I'm really very frightened about kids in particular. And I watch, you know, let's listen to this story, let me, you know, play this little thing for you, and so, I, I think we just need to educate people, and this is a very good beginning. Thanks.
Counselmember Worthington.
Well, I think Councilmember Anderson has pretty much said most everything that needs to be said on the subject, and he, as, as a nurse, he has a lot of familiarity with health issues, and I've seen him spend a lot of time and energy researching this issue and getting a, a lot more facts probably than all the rest of us on the city council. So, I think we should give him great kudos for his leadership on this issue, and we should move forward in supporting his proposals on how to move forward on this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I, I think, I think it's pretty obvious that the council believe, you know, the majority of the council will support putting this forward, so we'd, we'd like to agendize this, and we'll ask the Agenda Committee to, to agendize this before we, so we can do something similar, and using this as a model, the San Francisco radio frequency as a model, and then we can, at that time, we can determine whether we want to go further or what we want to do. Counselmember Worthington?
I think, out of respect for Councilmember Anderson, who's spent countless hours working on this, perhaps we could let him agendize it, since he's got the most knowledge, I think, of any of us.
I'd be glad to, but promise not to give a speech over five minutes. Okay.
Don't make promises.
Okay, well, I think that concludes it.
I think we're more interested in quality than quantity. Councilmember Anderson doesn't that often, and when he does, he speaks with great research and great authority, so...
God, this is a paid political announcement here, I don't know.
No, this is simply saying, you know, if someone has something to say for five minutes, we should listen. Sometimes people talk for one minute and say a lot, and sometimes they take longer.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not disputing his comments, but, but anyway, so, we're going to, we're going to, that concludes this portion. We're going to now go to our next item on the work session, which, thank you for coming, and we appreciate all, everybody coming long distances to be here. Thank you. And I learned, so, we're going to go right into, are you waiting till after? After, after, we're going to, we're going to have another one, then we're... Okay, let's go right away, come on, gang, let's step on it. Please take your conversations outside. We don't have much time for this next presentation. Max? A lot of garbage.
You lost the quorum.
Start in, man, we can just talk. Please be quiet, we're going to continue our business. Thank you.
Let me go ahead, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and, and members of the council. Andrew Clow, Director of Public Works, and I also have with me this evening Lisa Mallick today from our administration, Fiscal Administration, and Ken Etherington, our Solid Waste Manager. And we're going to provide to you a, a brief, apparently even more brief, refuse fund update. Tonight's presentation, we'll talk a little bit about the sources of the existing refuse fund deficit, review the adopted balancing plan from the fiscal, the two-year budget, some changes that are currently underway, and council actions required to continue those, and update on the refuse fund forecast and our next steps. And with that, I'll turn it over to Lisa, and she can start to talk about the sources of the refuse fund deficit.
So, as we've been talking with council over the last couple of years, there are a number of factors that have contributed to, could you?
No, we can hear you.
Number of factors contributed to the refuse fund deficit, and those include cost increases, primarily personnel and capital repairs, as well as declining revenue. So, despite the rate increase that was implemented effective fiscal year 10, we still saw a decline in our revenue. And this is just a quick reminder to council of the adopted balancing plan for the fiscal year 12 and 13, which included a combination of balancing measures, which were new contracts, implementation of several operational efficiencies. You approved the CPI increase in our collection rates, as well as a loan to pay for capital expenditures, and the purchase of solid waste vehicles in 2012 and 2013.
Some of the other changes that, that are currently underway is we will continue with the CPI adjustment, as well as implementing some new technology at the transfer station, the PC scale software, as well as the route optimization software, which will help us optimize the efficiency of our routes. Some of the other major changes underway, key milestones specifically for the route design and startup, and this refers to what Lisa mentioned earlier, the one-person collection crews. We have initiated the first stages of the training plan, and we'll be working on that through the fall 2011. And I'd be remiss if I didn't acknowledge that we're not going through some growing pains with that, as we continue to work with the one vehicle that we have, and trying to set up how exactly that's going to work, and we get everybody trained. But, steps that I've laid out here, and you can see clearly, is that we're expecting to be doing that here in the fall, and that will continue, as well as then identify the streets where a two-person rear loader is still required, as we anticipated in the budget projections that there would be some routes within the city that we would still need to service with two-person trucks, the one-person truck wouldn't be as effective. Identify route day changes for some customers, we'll work on that through the winter of 2012. And by that, meaning that as, as we change these routes, that there will actually be day changes, and that's going to be a little bit more disruptive, we understand, but is going to be important in the overall. We also will then continue to test and adjust the routes in the spring of 2012, work on customer outreach in the spring. We expect delivery of new trucks around July of 2012, if we, we make that, continue the purchasing process, and continue the training, and then actually implement the routes in the summer of 2012. The budget projections expected that we would implement the routes beginning in July of 2012. That's getting to be a bit of a push if we don't, if we don't purchase the trucks very shortly. The council actions needed to continue these, on, to keep us on track, would be on the agenda for later this evening. Landfill contract, as well as a construction demolition debris contract, conversion to the one-person trucks, we'll, we need to purchase the ten collection trucks. The ten collection trucks also are, are fleet as a whole, which we can talk about more later this evening if we want to, is, is very old. Most of the vehicles around 1996. They need to be replaced regardless of whether, how we're operating. We need to replace some of these vehicles, and even, not just for the efficiencies and to bring us up in using modern technology for the operational efficiencies, but we can operate 10 of these new trucks and emit about the same level of pollutants that we do with one of our existing trucks. So, they're significantly cleaner, there's dramatic improvement since 1996. And Lisa, if you could then explain a little more detail specifically with the budget?
So, the, the results of all of the changes that Andrew just outlined is that we will have the fund balanced by fiscal year 2014, and we will not need to, we will not need to return to the property owners and ask, ask for rate increases we've previously discussed. This does, however, assume that we continue to implement all of the balancing measures, that there's no further decline in any of our revenue streams, and that we continue to make the 2% CPI adjustments that were outlined in the original fiscal year 2010 rate adjustment. This also assumes the one-time purchase of, the one-time capital expenditures for capital repairs to finish some repairs at our transfer station as well as our closed landfill, and, excuse me, we will have our, that loan which we'll need for 12 and 13 repaid by 2015. And this slide basically just shows you the result of these changes on the financials. So, you'll see, you'll see an increase in our revenue through fiscal 13 and 14, and this is, just assumes a 2% CPI increase that we've talked about at this point. We're not assuming any significant increases in any of our revenue streams. You'll also see the expenditure starting to decline, and that's a result of additional personnel savings through fiscal year 13 and 14, as well as many of our one-time expenditures for the vehicles, as well as our capital repairs will have been completed at that point. And as I mentioned a few minutes ago, we'll also be able to completely pay back the loan by the end of fiscal year 2015.
So, in addition to the, the ongoing changes that we went through very quickly a few minutes ago, some of the next steps that we'll also be going through is to analyze the impact of the new state legislation, AB 341, and the StopWaste.org ordinance, which will require mandatory multifamily and commercial recycling, as well as working with the Zero Waste Commission on strategic planning process. It's our hope that through the balancing measures that have been adopted, if we can go through the process and implement these successfully, essentially what it gives us is a little bit of breathing room, so that we can step back, we can work with the Zero Waste Commission, and we can start to work on a longer-term strategy, a real planning process for how we operate the transfer station, what we do at the material recovery facility, and what we want to do in the long term to try to get ourselves to our zero-waste goal, and get past a lot of the difficulties that we've had, trying to try to balance the budget, and, and fix and correct some of the inefficiencies that we've had in our operation. And, and with that, I think, I think we did pretty good. We got through that pretty quickly and allowed some time for questions.
So, let's hear from the public. Members of the public, let's hear it, Russell?
No.
I would, I would be remiss to not tell you how pleased I am that we are all together here. I am so grateful to Andrew Clow, to Lisa, and Ken for all of their hard work, and in working with us so closely on the commission, paying attention to our suggestions, and we're thrilled to be moving forward with the creation of a true strategic plan. So, we'll be talking more about some of the actual measures as we go through, and I hope that you do have good questions about how we go about doing that planning process. But I couldn't be happier than to be here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Lionel Brackens Jr. I've been in solid waste for 25 years. I've been on almost every committee that came up over 20 years, worked in the hills on the trucks, work on the trucks right now. We do need trucks, but we know what kind of trucks we need. Now, what's going on right now is not planned out very well, in my opinion. And I am, I have a degree in garbage, I'm a garbageologist, okay? I'm hands-on. Now, for somebody to be in the office, or wherever they're at, and think they know what we need, and I've been on several committees that have picked out trucks, have got specs for trucks, trucks never came, and all of a sudden, we need these side loaders. What it's going to do, I'm going to tell you what it's going to do, it's going to cost you, it's going to cost you money later. This is what's called short-term thinking. Okay, we made $16 million surplus, you know, at, at one time. We don't know where the money went, but it didn't go back into our department, but we made money. Now, now, what we doing right now is putting ourselves in a position that we don't know what's gonna happen, but I know what's gonna happen, and I, I don't have to be here. I got about 25 years in, and I'm 55, gonna be 50, I can leave. But for the future of Berkeley, you know, I've been, I'm coming from the heart, and I always have, hey, think about, think about this. Don't look at where the trucks, two-man trucks can go, look at where these one-man trucks can go. I don't see too many places they can go, but I know the two-man trucks can go a whole lot of places. And it's more safer for the community. When I'm backing one of these driveways, and my man's back there telling the people to stop, people that I can't see, they, they don't care, they're just walking, you know? My man can stop them, stop the cars, cars are not stopping for us, my man is stopping those cars. You know, we need that. We need to protect the citizens of Berkeley and ourselves, because we hurt somebody, we, it's not, it's not gonna be the people in the office, it's gonna be on us.
All right. Next, please.
Hello, council. I'm the city manager, and the rest of the group. I'm Danny Walker.
Put your hand close to the mic.
Danny Walker, Vice President of Maintenance. I was here last time. They have tried to come and meet with us. It's funny how you got a plan, and we're just seeing the same plan that you're seeing right now. When we rolled over the contract, none of these people were at the table. And we specifically said we wanted to be a part of the planning, whether it's one-man truck, two-man truck, eight-man trucks. They're rolling this plan out, they're gonna say that the union agreed to it, and when it works, the city of Berkeley is gonna have a big problem. All we're asking is to be a part of the plan, not just give us something and tell us, go do it. We're asking to be a part of the plan. We have many, many years doing garbage. I don't think they can say the same. All we're asking is to be a part of what's going on. I haven't said buy the trucks or don't buy the trucks. Again, I'm saying, let us be a part of the planning. We've been down this road twice already, spent plenty of money, and here we are again.
I'm happy to be here and hear those gentlemen speaking, and I know, I didn't hear any mention of the cans that will have to be in the street. Apparently, they can't do this in the hills, streets won't take it, but cans in the street all day, and we already have a lot of parking, you know, you're given parking, you see once more and more, you take parking lots from the citizens, and give it to the developers, and the developers don't have to do parking, but now you're gonna mess it up with these cans in the street. But I'm concerned about the men and the jobs they do, they do a good job, you need two men. Those huge trucks, you, you need to have two people there, and, and you're going in these weird directions, and I sure wanna know more about it, so I'm gonna try to study up on this with people, and I hope we can do something about it, 'cause you keep doing it and doing it, and there's something, a lot wrong here. I heard about that $16 million that you made and where to go, and people need to be looking at that. Maybe we need term limits, maybe we need whatever it takes, because this, this city's just not doing it right anymore. They keep doing these things that people don't understand, but these men seem to understand, and if you're not listening to them, then that's another example of what's wrong here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Councilmember Mayo, you're recognized.
Thank you. I, I think we're all aware of how difficult it's been to address all of our budget shortfalls and meet all of our requirements. It's been really hard on many departments, and this one is no exception. And our staff does wonderful work at all levels, and we are struggling to provide services to people and, and deal with the high rates at the same time. So, I just wanna acknowledge the hard work that everybody has put into this, and how difficult it is to try to make the decisions, move forward as a team, and, and I'd like to, to ask you to talk about the meetings that you've had with staff, but I also acknowledge in the highlights that I made when I was reading, you know, these, this report, and how many changes we've, we've made, trying to cope with these budget shortfalls and our extraordinary needs, they are considerable. And we have mandates to go forward with reaching zero waste, so I'm really excited about the fact that we're going to move forward with our strategic planning process. Again, I'm hoping as a team to, to meet our goals. But maybe you could talk about the, some of the meetings that you've had and how you've moved forward, 'cause I know that, that, you know, the citizens are, you know, concerned about the future of what we've done and where we're going, and part of it is to, you know, ensure that we've done pretty good planning on this.
I, I can describe a whole series of different meetings, and, and if I could just get a little clarification, are we talking about the meetings with, working with zero waste, and, and trying to move forward on some kind of strategic planning, or specifically with the implementation of the, the trucks and the routes?
Yeah, I mean, I think the last time that we, we discussed this item, we were, we were expecting that you'd have a meeting, I think you had that meeting, and if you could talk about that.
That is correct. That is correct. It was discussed, the, the meetings started, well, there were many, many meetings in May, June, et cetera, leading up to the budget process. Lots of discussions about one-person routes, two-person routes, whether they should be eight, seven, six, how many trucks we should have, what they would look like. At that point, they're projections, that's exactly what they are, is we take a look, we take a look at industry standard, we take a look at what's happening around us, we currently operate way below industry standard, we're not using modern technology. And so we had many discussions with, with the union, with many staff, to discuss what do we think that we could make with the budget projection, rather than bring something forward to council that would be totally unrealistic. Since then, we have met with the union, and we went over the specifications for a training truck, which was on display this afternoon behind city council. We met with a variety of staff, including the union, to discuss the parameters of that particular truck, to buy that used vehicle specifically for the purpose of being able to do some training, and be able to get staff familiar with it. Then, we also went through a process and had sign-off from first-line supervisors, operators, et cetera, to purchase the, the trucks that are on the agenda for later this evening, to take a look at the specifications, to make sure, as, as Mr. Walker said, we don't wanna repeat the process of having purchased a truck that people were not in agreement with, with what the specifications were. We went through that process. We had a meeting here on October the 25th, and again, Mr. Walker came and expressed some concerns that we weren't meeting and including. So we met, actually, the following day, on October the 25th, at the regular, the 25th, 26th, at the regular monthly meeting that Mr. Etherington has every month with 10:21 to discuss solid waste operations, the union. And we specifically talked about some of these, and the points that I put up here on this slide were actually handed out at that meeting, those points, those basic key milestones that we'd be trying to obtain. We did not have details on a training plan at that point. We actually scheduled a meeting today, Mr. Ayers was at that meeting. I went down to the, to the yard, the meeting was cut a little short, I came back. And Mr. Etherington also met later in the afternoon today at 1:30. So we also have committed to, as I directed Mr. Etherington, to meet every two weeks over the remainder of this implementation period, so that we can talk about each of these steps along the way. Specifically, if you note that we have a training plan, we'll identify the streets, I have not received any of the data yet myself, regarding what exactly is working with the training truck and which ones. I know what's happening, I know what we planned, but we have not analyzed that data, but we will get it, we will share it, and we'll have those discussions. We're very committed to doing this going forward.
Thank you for going through that. I wanted to say that I appreciated so much seeing the training truck in operation today, and the person who was operating the truck seemed to be very skilled with doing that. It, I wanted to also ask you if you could discuss the cameras that were planned to be on the truck, specifically so that there's a lot of visibility on the...
We can, and I can either have Mr. Etherington or Mr. Ivy, our equipment superintendent, that could describe him in some detail, the four cameras that'll...
So that you'd be able to see, yeah, just very quickly, other people want to speak.
Yeah, there's a center screen in the cab, split in four, and there's a camera on the left side of the truck, so the driver can see what's coming up on his left side. There's a rear camera, if he's backing, that goes on automatically when he puts it in reverse. There's a camera in the hopper, that's to identify when he does tip a cart, that the whole load came out of the cart, it wasn't a partial dump. And then there's also a camera on the right side of the truck, so he can have visibility on that right side.
Councilmember Moore?
So, I must've got a... Thank you, I also appreciate the report. I do have a couple of questions about the report before I get into the discussion about the trucks. It talks about the elimination of three-saturday commercial routes, to make it more efficient, routes that were being done with overtime. Could you tell us which, which commercial routes those were that were eliminated from...
Yeah, the commercial routes were all driven on Saturdays, and what we looked at are customers that had six-day-a-week service, and we actually met with these customers to see if they could have a larger container in some cases, and do either a five-day-a-week service, four-day-a-week. So those accounts were only on Saturdays, and they were moved to a Monday-through-Friday route.
Was it a specific commercial district, or just...
No, it was, we identified, it was citywide. What we asked the computer is, identify customers that have six-day-a-week service, or Saturday service, and then we met with those folks.
You know, this evening, we do have the issue of the trucks, so if we could hold the, ask the specifics about the questioning of the trucks, that would, might be helpful.
Oh, okay, I thought it was this whole report that was before us.
Pardon?
I thought it was this whole report, that was before us.
Well, it's, it's actually the operations of the solid waste manager.
Okay, well, we talked about the truck. Again, I, again, I'm a little perplexed, and it's, I'm, I'm a little baffled. Again, we have members, employees, line staff, people part of the union who are responsible for dumping our trash, who's coming before us saying they're being left out of the process. And so I understand there was a meeting right after the council meeting, in which, back in October, when again, staff came before us and said that we're being left out of the implementation process, and then a meeting was held that very next day. And then I, I take it another meeting, a very brief meeting was held today. I just, you know, like the debate we just had on the cell phones, we had one group telling us cell phones are great, and we had another one telling them that it's causing us all to have brain cancer, and reduced the sperm in our, that we have. Who's right? 'Cause I'm getting different stories from two sides of the argument, and, and it's a little frustrating to be able to sit here as a policy board and find out who's right on this. I'd like to know, is the union having significant role-playing in the implementation of trucks? I understand they did participate in the specs of the truck, I understand that they may not have a strong position whether we purchase these trucks or not, but they wanna know how the trucks are gonna be implemented, given that they've spent 25 years of their life, or, or even longer in most cases, and actually picking up the garbage of the citizens of Berkeley. So, where are we? Are they, are they actually, that is, staff, working on the implementation plan, not the purchase of the trucks, not the specifications, but actually the routes and, and how we're gonna implement going forward?
Certainly, I'd be happy to answer that question. At this point, what you see regarding the implementation plan is, is pretty much what was on that slide. Here are these milestones, here are the key objectives that we need to accomplish over this timeframe. And that was provided, and that's where our discussion will initiate. We have a training truck that we received delivery on around September the 30th. It's been in the shop, unfortunately, a good deal that time, probably went by a used vehicle, perhaps. But, so we've only had that in play for about a month. And initially, yes, there are staff, there are only two people, and I may be incorrect on that one, who are, who are trained on it at this point, and the idea is to get one of the staff well-trained, so you can train the rest, and then the details, have we met numerous times over the month of October with the union? No. Are we planning to? Is this part of the process? Have we missed any steps in that process? No, because this is the, the stage that we're at right now, is doing that preliminary evaluation. As I said, I haven't gotten that data back either, but we absolutely are committed to continuing that process and having those discussions. We did have the meeting a couple of weeks ago, we did meet again today, and we will be continuing to meet. There isn't that much at this point to discuss, but as far as, we got one truck, you can only put two people, you can train, we're gonna do some Saturday training, et cetera. We're having those discussions, we are working with staff, it's not just the supervisors, but this is a nine-month process that we're embarking on here. There's going to be a lot of implementation time and discussions on exactly how we do it, which routes, which should be two-person routes, which should be one-person routes. We're absolutely committed to that, but to, in establishing this initial framework of what the key milestones and over what timeframe, most of that was indeed done by management. Now to take the next steps, exactly which routes and what do we do with that data, there'll be much more involvement.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify what I heard, Director Clow, I heard you said that this information was presented to them, that is, those members of the union, and that doesn't sound like collaboration to me, and I thought that that's what the, the union was expecting, that there'd be a collaborative effort in designing the implementation process of a one-man truck or the system that we're talking about. And, and if I understand you, you said that, you know, it was presented, and again, I would argue that presentation is not collaboration, and I think that's what they're looking for. Men and women who've done this day in and day out, wanting to be collaborated in, in the implementation process of these new trucks.
Okay, I think...
And the union can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think that's what I heard.
Yeah, I think that. Well, let me, let me, Andrew, let me just say, first of all, we made a decision to go to one-person trucks. The union was not in favor of that, and so, you know, there's a little, but obviously, we, we know that we need them, we're gonna work with them, and we have to, because, you know, they're, who can tell what the, the proper amount on a route is until you actually get the people out there doing it, and, and making these decisions? So obviously, you're gonna have them involved. And so I take it at your word that you'll do that, and so I wanna move forward, and if we hear that you're not, then we'll, we'll talk about it some more if we need to.
Mr. Mayor, any clarification? So when will we be able to ask questions about the document before us?
It's coming up this evening, the trucks are coming up this evening.
No, no, not the trucks. The document?
It's, it's, purchase the trucks, it's up this evening.
No, but I'm asking you, in our, in our, we have this item number two for this workshop, and there's a report here from Public Works.
Right.
And when can we ask questions about this report?
Well, Darrell, you can ask all night, we have five minutes till we, the next meeting starts.
There is some other thing.
The next meeting starts, we're gonna have this agendized this evening, it's...
I won't ask all night, but there is one issue that I think is very important, and that is this idea of a new rate structure?
That's more like it, that's what we're interested in.
I think so, too. And it, it, it seems to me, from reading this report, and maybe I read it wrong, that we're being told that we're not gonna really do a new rate structure. If the council wants one, they should let us know, but I thought we had a pretty extensive discussion about the need of having a fee that covered the basic cost of collection. 'Cause right now, it's based on your, your garbage size, and if people are doing their recycling, they're getting smaller and smaller garbage cans, so therefore revenues are going in the opposite direction, but there's a basic cost of stopping at a resident's house and collecting their garbage.
No matter what size.
And, no matter what size. And in order for us to get there, we have to have a new rate structure, a new way of charging people for the collection of refuse. So my question is, where are we at the creation of a new model to create a new rate structure in the city of Berkeley?
Yes.
Well, let me try to address some of it, because I think first we have to determine the costs, because you could spread rates lots of different ways, but first you gotta figure out, what is the cost to provide this service? I could tell you, back of the envelope, my analysis, it costs about $25 to pick up any size can, minimum, and that includes recycling, refuse, and that's a 13-gallon can, so that's the minimum cost. If we were to charge all of our folks who have those 13-gallon cans, that minimum charge would raise $200,000. So it doesn't cover the total cost of the program.
It's only a fraction.
So it's an order to fraction, so that's the order of magnitude we're talking about. would raise $200,000, so it doesn't cover the total cost of the program. So, it's an order to fraction it, so that's the order of magnitude we're talking about. So, the real, so if we were to determine that we would back off the two-person trucks, the cost would go up, be a much higher cost. So, first, you gotta determine the costs, and then you should determine a rate structure that goes along with the cost.
Your costs of $25 per household, is that based on tip fee and disposal, or is it just pickup?
Just to pick up.
That's not really... Would that be a complete analysis? I think you have to not only pick it up, but you gotta dispose of it.
No, I'm saying, that's the minimum cost, just to pick it up, but no matter what the size, then you could determine the size and go from there. There's a minimum cost, and then from there, there's an incremental cost. But the disposal cost, I feel, is incremental compared to the cost of the pickup, and that is both the refuse and the recycling costs. You could just, the trucks and the people that go out to pick it up. So, that's the order of magnitude, and we talked to several people about it, and that's the extent, you know, so. In the report, we say to do an in-depth rate analysis, that is, to determine the cost, what it takes for one person or two persons, how far, and the cost of fuel, it would be roughly $70,000 to that, and we've talked to several consultants, do that extensive rate analysis.
Are there any other cities that use a minimum per unit cost?
Yeah, because once we talked to, yeah.
So, we can look at their model and maybe replicate...
Or they have, or they have, they don't do 13-gallon cans.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
They don't have the 13-gallon cans, or 11-gallon cans, whatever it is.
Okay.
Right. So, that's, Oakland has a 20-gallon can.
They've done away with the small, the small can.
Yeah, that's what they do.
Councilman Wengra, you have 30 seconds. No, you can take as long as you want, we'll just go over.
So, I'm actually very encouraged by the efficiencies that you've identified, and I want to thank you very much for all the work you've done on this. I do have some questions. One is, are there other ways to reduce overhead that you're looking for?
We're always looking, and I think if you, in the report, you'll see there's a pretty exhaustive list. We've looked at what we can do with the landfill and the C and D costs, we've looked at what we can do with the type of equipment we use on the routes, we've looked at the software to help us to maximize those routes, we've looked at software in the scale house to improve and reduce the amount of time across the scales and improve our efficiency there. We're looking at efficiencies that we could incorporate, and we have within equipment maintenance, and we will continue to look, but do I have more than what we put here in the report right now? No, I'm open to more ideas, though, certainly.
In terms of the strategic plan, do you have a timeline for when you're gonna be moving forward and what the projected date for a strategic plan is?
I do not have an end date for that right now. We had a very brief discussion, we provided an update along these lines at the last Zero Waste Commission, and we committed to coming back and working with them. Mr. Atherton has been in many conversations with the Chair of the Commission, and that is our first step, is to take a look, much like we have here, with sort of the key objectives in a long-term timeframe, is what do we want to accomplish and which are the steps, and then we have to do the real work of fleshing that out. But I think briefly, the conversation we had at the Zero Waste Commission was something along the lines of maybe 18 months is over this next budget period. If we get the breathing room and we're operating and we get the efficiency we need, it gives us some time to work through that, so we really know what we want to do before we would go out seeking a rate increase, as you mentioned, Mr. Moore, that, you know, what kind of a sustainable rate structure can we put in place? But we want to be able to do it in terms of all the aspects of the operation, not just taking a hit-and-miss approach, but really looking at, does it mean it's gonna be impacted by how we run the transfer station itself, as well as the operations on the, you know, collection routes?
Okay. And in terms of franchise fees, are you, how are you looking at the franchise fees? Is there any talk of raising, raising the fees?
Well, the council asked us to notify the franchisees...
Yes, I saw the letters.
That we're gonna terminate, you know, the termination in five years.
But within that, before that five-year period, don't we have the ability to raise the fees?
Well, that'll be that discussion within the five, with probably the next two years, what the council wants to do in terms of an inclusive franchise or taking a house or whatever options.
Well, Phil, we can't adjust it till after the five-year period, although...
You can't change it up to the five years, but you have to start the discussion.
We can talk about it, but you can't, unless they agree to it, you can't change it.
Unless, well, they agree to it, that's correct, but...
Okay. And I can't ask questions about the routes now, is that it?
The routes and the trucks.
Okay, so, I see you've identified four routes in the city where you think the one-man trucks will not work, and I'd, actually, it'd be very helpful to me to see what those routes are.
When you're saying four routes, and Ken could speak to this a little bit more, each day, what the projections we're looking at is that running seven routes on any given day, five of them as a single operator and two with two, be a number of different, every day, each day of the week, there'd be a few routes, predominantly in the hills, exactly, in the more inaccessible locations where we might need to continue to use the rear loader, continue to have two people on those routes, but that is what, we're at the very initial stages of that evaluation in going out there with the new truck. The first part was to get the operator really familiar with how the truck operates. It's gonna be difficult to evaluate whether you can effectively run that route until you know the operator can effectively operate the truck, and that really was the first step. And so, now, the next part involving many more people in a discussion and the evaluation. So, that was what was projected in the budget, that's what we're hoping can work out, we don't know exactly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, thank you very much. We're gonna have the issue of the trucks later this evening, actually, the purchase of the trucks, whether we're gonna do that or not. So, I need a motion to adjourn the special session.
So moved.
Moved by, I'll second it by Bates, okay, we're all voted unanimously, we're adjourned. We're gonna be back at 7:15 for the regular meeting, sorry about the delay, but we'll be back in 10 minutes.